Leave it to the three of you on how we want to do it. I know Arts walked us through it, but I will defer to the experts on how you would like to proceed.
How about if I start and I'll try to get us through, but the subject matter experts probably will be the ones who dive into any substantive questions because Mitzi and her staff did a lot of work on this.
A lot of work.
And I want to recognize that. And I know she and Eric worked together. So, all right.
It's mostly Mitzi's staff.
They did a great job.
They did. All right. So, starting with 7.10, School Budget System. And I'm just going to go through, and if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, just speak up. Otherwise, I'll keep moving through. Next is Policy 7.101, Fund Balance Policy.
That's not changing.
I don't believe there are any...
There's no changes suggested to that one. Yeah. Okay.
Policy 7.102, Debt Management. It's a long one, but the change, I think, is just...
One section into two paragraphs.
Numerical.
Okay.
7.20 is Accounting and Control Procedures. And there, there was the one change that talks about the formatting shall include a cumulative report to date of all receipts and expenditures. And what was added was comparative to budget, so you can compare to budget.
That was an addition from Mr. Robinson.
Okay, perfect. I have a quick question, and of course, I don't have it with me. From an internal audit standpoint, based on the law, there was a bill that went through. Are you familiar with it? Okay, is that, was that change in here from a...
It's effective 7.119.
19, okay. So, that's why I wanted to raise it because it's, yeah, so I'm familiar with 7.119, but so the board's aware because we will have to make a change to be compliant with that.
Yes, I don't think we've made any change in here yet for that.
There's no change in, maybe you would have additional policies related to your internal audit.
Okay.
They would report directly to you as a board. They don't fall under...
So, it'd be probably in Chapter 2.
So, I'm not sure if it would fall under School Board Governance, if it falls under Financial. I mean, it could fall under...
Could fall under either one.
Okay. I mean, I just, to not to be redundant, it's in law. We have to do it by act date, which is July 1, 2019. Eric.
The mere fact that there's an internal auditor wouldn't change how Mitzi does to her job.
No.
And she, hopefully, she's doing her job correctly and within policy.
Correct.
So, having someone review to make sure she's doing in policy won't change the fact of what the policy is, so...
No. That's so you think it would be...
With a new policy.
The new policy would be how the internal auditor interacts with the board.
More on Governance, Chapter 2.
A Governance issue of how they interact with the board.
Okay. Well, we already said that one, so...
In Chapter 2, we've got, you know, some policies related to the board hiring the superintendent. You have a policy or two about hiring the lawyer. You may want to put next in sequence, hiring the internal auditor.
Okay. I just wanted to, if there was a way to streamline it, but I do agree it's more appropriate. So, sorry about that. That's all.
All right. 7.25, Grant Management, just a typo. 7.30, Educational Enhancement Funds, short and no change. Like those. We like the short and no change ones. 7.31, Food and Nutrition Services Funds, just a couple of statutory changes there, but no substantive change. 7.32 is Internal Funds.
That's, that's actually removing the requirement for the principals to supply a report to the superintendent or designee every month. We actually get their bank statements and do their bank reconciliations for each of the school's internal accounts, submit those to the principals for their signature, and our software that we use allows us to pull a report on any school at any point in time. So, it's kind of duplicative to have them, submit them to us, so we removed it away.
Okay.
7.33, Petty Cash Funds, and the change there, the new sentence is just out of the statute.
Just making it clear. Can't use it for loans.
7.34 is Acceptance of Credit Debit Cards.
And the change here is before it was just at schools, and now this is also for district departments. HR uses it for teacher recertification fees. Safety and security uses it for background fingerprint checks and stuff like that. So, it was just making it so that you could have more entities accept a credit card.
Policy 7.35 is Entitled Investment of Funds. And then with that is the, is the large second guidelines.
So, on this, I just wanted to let you know that there are just two additions actually on the policy itself. It's just Risk and Diversification and Master Repurchase Agreements, which are addressed in the policy guideline document. I also have Jason Hume in here from PFM, in case there are any specific questions regarding the investment policies. And just so everyone's aware, the Financial Advisory Committee has reviewed the policies and the guidelines on at least three different meetings, I believe, and at their last meeting unanimously approved the changes in their, you know, from their perspective, they've unanimously approved the changes.
In 7.35, can you tell me why there were so many changes? What happened, like Page 9 and Page 10, where everything is scratched out?
Yes. What they did was, I think, to make it easier, was they took everything and deleted it in its entirety and then brought it back in its new versions. So, there's a whole section of definitions in the back, like thick. They deleted all of the old definitions and just added an entire new section of definitions. And then they took the table that had where you could invest the funds and changed that and the different items within that category. So, I think they thought it would be easier for reading purposes to strike all and then give you a new version.
When I see that much change, I want, I wonder why...
Yeah, and that really is what the main reasons for the changes. The substantive changes in the investment policy guidelines are changes to percentages of different investments. And there was the addition, actually at the request of the Financial Advisory Committee, was the addition of two different types of investment vehicles, asset-backed securities and supra-nationals. And so, there was some educating the committee on what those were, and they felt comfortable. But I do know Mr. Robinson has a concern with asset-backed securities, so we can have a conversation around that and, and strike that if you want. Or, right now, the recommended policy maximum is no more than 10% of the total amount of funds invested. So, Eric, Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, I did, I did attend the Financial Advisor Committee, and they, and they did agree to it unanimously. And Mitzi and I did discuss it afterwards, and we had agreed that, although Mitzi was very accommodating, we had agreed that because the Financial Advisor Committee had agreed unanimously to leave it the way the Financial Advisory Committee had agreed to, but I wanted to voice my concerns, and that's why it wasn't changed to what my concerns were, but that I'm just voicing my concerns here. And my concern has to do with the asset-backed securities. If you can go back to 2008, which I'm sure everybody remembers, how much angst asset-backed securities, you know, had. And I just feel that if something happened again to the real estate market and, and there was a fall in it, and we end up losing money because we were buying asset-backed securities, I think you'd have a hard time telling the public that you invest in asset-backed securities after everything that happened in 2008. The marginal, I agree that it will increase the rate of return, but I think the rate of return that it would increase is such a negligible amount that from my point of view, from the perception to the public and from the risk factor, I don't, I don't particularly like investing school funds in asset-backed securities.
So, it's 10% of the amount of the fund that we're...
It could be. It could be zero.
But we have like a max.
That's the max. That's the maximum.
From a diversification standpoint, I mean, I think it's a risky, I don't disagree, but I also think if we have a, if we have a cap on it from a balance standpoint...
I agree, you could diversify the risk. I'm agreeing you could diversify the risk, and it, and it could have an additional increase.
It would not, so it's not able to exceed 10% in that particular budget.
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it, knowing that there's...
I mean...
It was unanimous. It was unanimous.
It was unanimous.
Well, I can just tell you, it was the subject of considerable conversation. Part of that process was also looking at like entities, not just school district, but other public entities. And so, just on behalf of the Financial Advisory, as they said, they spent a good portion of three consecutive meetings looking at this. I just wanted you to understand the information that was presented to them, and that they modeled this off of other like organizations. But Mr. Robinson's concerns were also shared around that table.
I did not speak. I didn't speak. Other people had that concern.
Concerns similar to Mr. Robinson's were shared around the table.
But I do want to reinforce that I think our Financial Advisor came, made a very well-informed decision, and I think they, that they understood the issues. I'm just saying that when it comes to the board, there's, we have, we have concerns that the Financial Advisory Committee doesn't have. I think for their role, they made the right decision, given the role that they play within the organization. They were looking at diversification, minimal amount of risk, you know, a 0.1% increase in, in, you know, interest or whatever, whatever there is. I think what they, I think for them, they made the right decision for their group. I'm just saying, as a school board, you have to, you have to, we have to, we have to be concerned about other issues besides the issues the Financial Advisory Committee does. We, our fiscal responsibility and fiduciary responsibilities is different than the Financial Advisory Committee. That's my point. But I agree, I agree with, I didn't, I didn't mention that, but I was just saying they, it was unanimous, that they did debate this issue, they did weigh up, weigh upon it, and I think at the end, they made the right decision for their body. My only point is, this body has, has different concerns, and I think that, that if the public came in and said, "Are you guys crazy? Did you not see what happened in 2008? Real estate market fell, and you didn't, you didn't see this coming?" It would be a hard thing to justify to sit in front of our constituents and explain to them why we made that vote.
No, I don't disagree.
But I'll, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't so bad that I, that I said, "Mitzi, we need to change it." You know, Mitzi and I talked about it, and we agreed that we would leave it, that leave it the way it was, and I'd bring my concern up to the board, and if the board, you know, is fine with it, then we'll move forward.
I have a quick question. So, when they compared it to other public entities or school districts, were we on a, was our risk threshold higher, or is it on par, or when we talk about the percentage that we're investing?
As a percentage for school districts, there is only one other school district that they use for comparative purposes that currently has it built into their policy. There are a number making moves to change them and add them into their policy. At what percentage, I'm not sure. But when you compared us to other entities that invest, or they took the PFM, like Book of Business, all of their different clients, and compared us with them and where the majority of them are, we are a little more conservative in terms of, and we, because we don't even invest in them.
But I'm not making the argument whether because other districts didn't have it, we shouldn't. That wasn't, that's not my argument. I, again, I just want to reiterate, I think the Financial Advisor Committee weighed all those options, and I think based upon their role, they made the right decision. I'm just simply saying, I think our role is slightly different.
Okay. I guess my thing is public entity versus a book of business that are privately, publicly different. Public entity.
It was only public entity.
That's what I wanted to say.
It was all public entity.
Big distinction of clarity. Okay. Okay. All right. Unless, any other comments?
Representative.
All right. All right. Thank you. I mean, I'm fine with that. If this, if they sign off on it, I get, but your, the risk is, I get it, but, all right. Okay.
Any other questions about the policy guidelines for 7.35?
No, but thank you. This is great. A lot of work put into this.
Okay. Back to the other book.
After book.
Policy 7.36, Electronic Funds Transfers and Payments. No substantive changes there. 7.37, Bonded Personnel, similarly, no substantive changes there.
So low. It's so low.
7.38.
I just want everyone to know it's super low. Okay. No, but I know it's statute, correct? 15,000?
I'm sorry.
The $15,000 bond?
Yes.
The statute.
Yes, it is, but...
Got to get the statute ticket.
Okay.
I caught it.
7.38, Facsimile and Electronic Signature. So, this was changed to keep up with modern technology and electronic signatures.
Correct.
Good. Okay.
7.39, Expenditures for Promotion and Public Relations. No substantive changes there. 7.40, Fundraising for School Projects and Activities. And there are some changes there, nothing too significant, I don't believe. Just clarification.
Yeah, I think the main thing is to incorporate some of the guidance within the red book, which is, you know, the requirements for school district finances, and then also to incorporate the non-compete clause with food nutrition. You can't compete with, when they're in operation, so...
Okay.
7.41, Outside Organizations. No changes recommended there. 7.50, Payment of Vouchers. Same. I think what we're finding is we were in pretty good shape on Chapter 7 here. 7.51, Payroll. Struck the procedures. Just call it payroll.
It's a policy. And the main things were to change from principals to cost center heads. That was, I believe, actually, Mr. Robinson suggested that because it's not just principals who sign off on payroll. I sign off on my staffs. And then we did a little bit of changing around on the authorized payroll deductions. There was a lot of extraneous language that wasn't really necessary, so updated that.
7.512, Tax Sheltered Annuities and Custodial Accounts.
Right. And this is, there's information in our collective bargaining agreement, so that was incorporated into it, and it just kind of defined the types of annuities that we offered.
Okay. If I'm looking down and anyone wants to speak, shout out, please.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to stop anybody from talking.
That's what I'm saying. If I'm looking down, just, you know, it's casual today.
All right. 7.52, Travel Expense Reimbursement.
This was to align more to our procedures. The superintendent does not approve every single person's travel, so just needed added designee.
7.53, Expenditures for Fringe Benefits for Employees.
I have one scribna here.
Okay.
It should be federal, should be capital, federal Medicare system.
Okay. Where...
Where is that?
In the red.
Oh, yeah. Two.
Participate in capital, federal.
Oh.
See, I do read this stuff.
Right there.
Got it?
Capital F, yeah.
Good catch.
Yeah. And then we added non-appointed versus part-time, because we have some employees who could technically be considered part-time, but are entitled to, you know, all of the benefits.
Wait a minute. This is another part of that, too. So, how much, this is on, on page three of three of that same section. The school board shall provide life insurance in the amount of $50,000. It says established in this collective bargaining agreements in place of that. Why did we change the $50,000 to the other?
We didn't, what we did actually was during the recession, we actually changed it to $25,000. And then we changed it back up. When we went back and out for an RFP and were able to get a really good rate, we were able to restore it without incurring really very much in costs. So, instead of having to change the policy every single time there's a change in that, we just said whatever's in the collective bargaining agreement.
You want flexibility.
And it kind of covered us.
Thank you.
There's quite a few of those kind of changes incorporated in here, where it's, instead of naming specific statutes down to the parent, it just says statute, so that we don't have to worry about changing it all the time.
7.60, Audits.
So, Mr. Robinson wanted us to add the word certify public into the independent accounting firm language, because they are certified public accounting firms. And then...
It's important. Makes difference.
And then, under B, we eliminated Section 2 because we, again, said it was part of Florida statutes, which too was identifying a piece of the statute, so...
7.61, Energy Conservation Policy.
Now, there is a potential change here that's not incorporated. These were done quite some time ago. So, under 4B, it says, it actually said removing Chief of Schools Police and changing it to Director of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management, who is now an executive director. So, it either needs to say executive director, or you want to have it be the Chief of Police.
Chief of Police.
I'm not sure who you want to have do that work. So, I was going, well, maybe we don't need to change it at all.
When we put executive director or...
Or...
Why don't you say superintendent? Or that's a...
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, that was probably...
Titles around with superintendents.
Superintendent's always going to be the superintendent.
There may not be a director or a chief or grand poobah.
There you go.
Want to make your headmaster?
Headmaster. Yes.
Okay, I agree. I was going to say, how do we keep it so we don't keep changing it? So, that works.
That's great.
All right.
Okay.
7.70, Purchasing and Competitive Solicitations.
So, again, we, I wanted to change it to competitive solicitations, because it's not just bids, it's RFPs, R buys, RFQs. And then the only real substantive change is under emergency purchases, and this is part of the Uniform Grant Guidance, the, what they call the 2 CFR, Code of Federal Regulation.
I was going to say, isn't it statute?
It's all statutory.
I was going to say, okay, that's what I thought.
It's all required by law.
So, and it's very explicit. What it is.
Why don't you pick a tiny one?
It's old versions.
I think because some of them have comments on the side.
Yeah.
And when they do, it scrunches down the...
Old and young and older.
There you go.
We did, that's why...
Well, here's a big one again. 7.701, Resolution of Protest from Contract Bidding Process. So, this is, this is the large print edition.
Oh, because it doesn't have the comments.
Because it doesn't have the comments, right.
And so, again, the only thing here was changes to the language.
And we've...
And again, this...
Looked at this exhaustively recently, so...
7.702 is the Procurement Code of Conduct.
Which is weird, the revision dates...
No, this is, this is interesting, because I'm not sure, do you guys updated 7.701 or 7.71?
7.7...
Seven, okay, you're right.
7.71.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's...
That's coming up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think on 1, 2, 3, 4, it should be volunteers or agents should not accept, comma, directly or indirectly, comma, anything of value.
Caroline, are you on...
7.702, for the district's employees, volunteers, or agents...
On...
Shall not accept directly or indirectly anything of value.
Yeah, so that directly or indirectly should be...
Commaed.
Commaed before and after.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. There you go. And this is straight from Florida statute, 112, 313. So, should we put that...
We should put that...
That's what I was going to say, reference it, because again, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, should we...
Does that mean, I don't see it changing, but...
Okay.
I actually called Carol on that $25 thing today.
All right. So, here's 7.71, which is the long one that we just...
January 23rd.
Just did.
Yeah, January 23rd.
Although it doesn't, although it doesn't show that.
I thought it was, okay.
Which is interesting, but those were the copies that you sent to her, and then the 123, though...
I mean, this is, this is as changed.
Yeah, and it's, the revision one is online on January 23rd.
23rd, okay.
The revision date of January 23rd.
We did not suggest any further changes to this one.
That's what, correct. All right. All right. That was my question.
We just put it in here just for completeness.
Exactly. Yeah, no, no, I agree. I just want to make sure that was the amended and ratified version. So it is.
Yes. 7.72, Acquisition, Use, and Exchange of School Board Property.
Yeah.
And, and we, we made clear here in the first paragraph, the policy applies to school board property other than real property, because that has a separate policy.
Correct.
Fake property, right?
Yeah.
Personal property.
It's personal.
Tangible.
It's exactly what it is. It's not real.
Unreal property.
Unreal.
Wait a minute. Don't go away, please. Okay. We'll go down. This is 7.72. Go down to B.
Okay.
And the appropriate district cost center, district is, is small.
Yeah, appropriate.
Records in district departments, again, district is small. Further down, and then the next one, or district is small.
We've got great proofreaders in here.
Oh, okay.
There's three of them.
And all in that same section.
And to C.
And then C, same.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Above it, on B, there's another one up there, too.
There's, we, we're capitalizing D district all throughout this.
The district is capitalized. District is not.
No, it'd be the other one.
So, all right. So, I think we just need to be, yeah, we just need to be consistent. So, under 2A...
Yeah, I missed some of them.
District, oh.
That's a little D?
Yeah.
District, you're talking about, you're not talking about specifically.
It has to say the district. If it doesn't say the, it's small.
We could create a policy for any district. Listen, I don't make up the language. I just botch it as good as I can.
I do, too.[1609.12]
I do, too.
All right, so C then also has...
I'm a numbers person.
That's what I'm saying, I'm glad they're really good grammar checks.
7.66, that is going to be perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
We can have a good, great class.
7.73, back to little, back to little letters, acquisition of real property. And the change here, obviously, in 4 is just explicitly saying the school board can hire consultants to help, which I think we have done, but now it's putting it in policy.
Yeah.
And it's obviously a May, so. 7.74, lease and lease purchase of land, facilities and equipment.
Right. This is mainly, it says shall state in writing how the land will be used for educational purposes. That's usually in many documents, lease documents. And it also states that we're not pledging the full faith of the school district, which we're not.
Which we're not allowed to do.
Correct. Not unless we're, not unless we're separately taxing it, which requires referendums.
7.75, sale, transfer or disposal of property.
So this is just adding additional language on how the property, once it's been deleted off of our records, can be disposed of, which is normally through an auction, but you can also donate it to another governmental entity or another nonprofit if it's got no value.
So we just wanted to keep as much flexibility as possible.
That's what we used to do with portables.
Portables, right?
Right.
Yeah, and then they, and then there's separate rules with the use of federal grants, when you make a purchase with federal grants and how you dispose of that property. Policy 7.75, I think, was actually placed before the head page, but I could be wrong.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Not mine.
Oh, really?
Just yours.
Just me.
Just yours.
Just me.
7.76, lost or stolen property, just adding cost center head and I don't think these, any of these are particularly substantive changes here.
Right.
Any school board property number one that shouldn't be talked about, Joe.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Any school board, any school board do not be classified, the school board or any...
Well, but it is, it's this school board. It's, it's this school board. It's not...
But it says in the...
Yeah. No, agreed.
Why not change that to V? Change in.
When the school board property has been finalized?
It's not from a school board, it means...
Any property.
I know, I know, I know what it says.
Any school board, that should not be capitalized. It should be small.
Hello.
It should be small.
Should be small.
Okay. Small it is.
I love that we have more conversation about grammatical errors versus content.
That's all right.
Good.
Shows we read it all.
That's good. No, I don't disagree.
7.77, inventories and property records.
How complimentary is that?
I like it. Very good. Very good.
That's a fancy way of saying I'm not good at grammar. I ain't good at grammar.
So.
7.771, capital assets.
Seven, 7.7...
71.
7.71, got it.
Capital assets, I don't think there's any...
There's no change.
No change.
Yeah, policy was revised in 2016.
What's five minus 40 years? Is that negative 35?
I don't know. Why? What are you talking about?
I can't, we're going to actually get through this whole policy, even, nonetheless.
240, okay.
Adequacy of educational facilities and growth management.
As he should.
Like open night.
It's been a long time, but I do have an education degree, too. I know how to ignore.
All right, no, I don't see any changes on this.
No, no substantive changes here.
That's true. Difference there.
And finally, 7.80, risk management insurance program.
Which we changed recently, too.
Well, I think mostly it's just kind of taking some of the languages, you know, each of the bullets say self-funded, self-funded, self-funded.
Right.
And it just changes it to, any insurance can be self-funded or commercial or a combination thereof, so that's pretty much what it was.
Again, keeping, keeping the broadest...
If we go back to 7.78.
Yes.
One on three. C, it says ed spec shall contain a facility list, general design criteria wise facility capitalized, and not the rest.
I'm sorry, it's page...
An equipment list, why is equipment stat capitalized?
I think that that's, it's a document that they use and it's probably capitalized on the document head, but...
Furniture fixtures and...
Yeah, because furniture, fixtures and equipment are also capitalized, I guess, because those are...
That's a specific list.
That's a, yeah, because it's special.
But ed spec shall contain a facility list that should not be capitalized.
Little F, little L.
Right. I'm sorry, it's not just...
No, no.
It's right out.
Should F, F and E be capitalized?
Long time ago.
We're fixing it now.
Should F, F and E be capitalized, though?
Well, it's...
Because the facility list that's sent to the state.
FF and E is kind of a thing, but I, it's also...
FF and E is exactly what it is.
When it's FF and E.
When it's FF and E.
When it says furniture fixture and equipments list.
That's different. That's a list. So that's the name of the list.
Believe it?
The other is not.
The facility list?
No, it's the facilities list, general design. It's all the same thing.
Policy, nobody had a problem with any of the numbers.
But, there you go. No, I...